Morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you would please rise and join us in the black salute will be led this morning by Supervisor Crocker and remain standing for a moment of silence, thank you.
Lute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll take up our Board of Supervisor matters this morning, I'll start with Supervisor Vanderpoel to my left.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just wanted to mention, we had a real tragedy this weekend when we lost two firefighters in the Ferguson incident up there, I think it was on Saturday, Chief, but I just think it's really important that we all keep in mind the risk that firefighters are taking to keep our community safe each and every day and certainly the fire season is off to a very rough start and we've lost several lives and up north in the car fire, things have gotten really scary up there too, so please do keep the firefighters and their families in your thoughts and prayers and Tulare County does have crews committed up there as well, so please do keep our county family members in your thoughts and prayers as well. This week, on August 2nd, which is Thursday, at 3:30 in Department 6 at the Visalia Courthouse will be the swearing-in of Judge Carrie Lopez, want to congratulate her and look forward to working with her and hopefully not being in the defendant's side of the courtroom, but working with her in her capacity as she works up the ranks, I'm sure, and will be dealing with her as presiding judge someday. On Friday, at 10:00 AM in the Pixley Community Room adjacent to the Pixley substation, Kim Van, former Calusa County Supervisor, she's now the State USDA Director, is having a listening tour and a roundtable discussion regarding infrastructure needs in rural California. This is not limited to just Pixley, this is actually for all of the county, but anywhere where there are various infrastructure needs, she wants to come and hear about them and see how the USDA can partner to help improve the infrastructure in our unincorporated and disadvantaged communities, so I encourage anyone to attend that can. That will be at 10:00 AM and go from 10 to 11:30. And then next week, on Wednesday, at 8:30 will be a Retirement Board meeting and should be an exciting meeting at that time, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Supervisor Shuckman.
Thank you. I, too, had on my list, I want to echo what Pete said regarding the fires throughout California and Chief Norman, you know, extend our, you know, well wishes and safety to all our crews that are out there in addition to everybody else in the state. Last Thursday, I attended a CSAC Institute class and actually it was my last class to become a credential Supervisor, so in November at the CSAC conference I will be receiving my credential. On Friday, I was offstate in Sacramento and attended our San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting, which is the Amtrak meeting as we like to call it, so people know what that stands for. And the Morning Express that I've been talking about, I still want to encourage people to take that when they can, ridership is trending up, not as high as we would like to have seen it be, but it is trending up and there may be some tweaks to the schedule, maybe leaving a little later out of Fresno, that 4:25, 5:00 AM seems a little bit different than 4:25, although it's 35 minutes, so it's been getting in early on some occasions, so we're hoping that that'll, that'll help. Tomorrow, I have a Institute for Local Government Board meeting, Governments Committee call-in meeting, and then I will also be meeting with Visalia City Manager Randy Groom tomorrow, so keep him busy.
Now that you're certified, are we expecting super duper concepts, ideas?
Oh, absolutely.
I was just gonna say better results.
Well, it depends on who you sit with, you know?
Well, you couldn't be thinking of us.
But they say it's hard to soar with eagles when you're sitting with turkeys or something like that.
I never should open that door.
No, you did.
Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you. I just want to cover a meeting I had yesterday with City Visalia, they were kind enough to invite me along, City Manager Randy Groom, Assistant City Manager Leslie Cavilla, and Vice Mayor Bob Link. And we, we had a meeting with Fresno State President, Dr. Joe Castro, as well as Larry Salinas, part of his cabinet, and the emphasis was to discuss moving forward with having Fresno State have a larger presence in Tulare County in particular and to really help facilitate a vacuum that we have. Fresno oftentimes talk about that they have a brain drain and that they have a lot of young professionals that leave the Fresno Clovis area and go to other metropolitan areas and, and I can sympathize with that, but I said, "How much greater is it here in Tulare County when there is no four-year university presence?" And we're the largest area that doesn't have a university, so this, this wouldn't necessarily in the past, there's been lots of emphasis on creating a new university, I think that a partnership with one that's already draws a lot from us, I think that's more realistic in this current future, and I think that still provides the needs for, for anyone that's seeking higher education opportunities. And, and so we, we had lengthy discussion, it was, I think, very fruitful, there's, there's several options that are on the table, none of these things will happen overnight, but I think now is the time to be discussing it and to be planning and to moving forward so that in the, in the next decade, or I'm hoping sooner, but in like, but realistically, the next five to 10 years, we can have a large presence here that, that, that people can stay within the county and get an entire degree without ever having to leave, and I think that's important for our long-term future to make sure that we are providing our, you know, individuals that, that want to go on that career path and that educational path, that opportunity, knowing that that's not for everyone and we've got plenty of other opportunities for that, but if, but I think that that helps, just give additional options for people that, that have a problem with access right now. And so, we touted the, the efforts of the City of Visalia with the V-line that specifically goes from here to Fresno State, as well as a couple of other locations in Fresno, and that's had a tremendous amount of success, and they're very appreciative of that efforts, in fact, Kings County, Madera County, they're trying to copycat that and do something similar. So I, I think we're, we're headed in the right direction, but we want to make sure that, that we don't, that we, we don't lose momentum, so it was, it was very fruitful and we'll be having more meetings in the upcoming months.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Dennis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thursday, I'll have a GSA meeting at 2:00 in City of Porterville, that's Eastern Tulie GSA. That morning, I'll be attending with our Rotary Club, we're gonna go out to Porterville College and get a tour of the Science Lab, which goes all over to all the grammar schools in the region during the school year and do demonstrations on SIA, so Denise Goodman, who runs that, is gonna give us a tour and some of the things that, that she does. Then later, we're, the club's gonna go by the, the Cancer Center, the Good Center, and present them with a check from our Relay for Life, so it's gonna be a, a nice, a nice deal. Friday, I'll also be attending the meeting in Pixley, and of course, one of the big recipients of that USDA is Poplar, and they've, they've got a lot of improvements to their water system there due to the GSA loans and GSA grants, so that's gonna be a, a very good meeting, I think. And then out in the audience this morning, we have Supervisor-elect Dennis Townsend. Dennis, stand up, let everybody see how, see what you look like, yeah, he's also...
Oh, that's him!
Mr. Green.
And he's, and, and for you guys that don't know it, he's in the redneck dictionary under "How Big a Man Are You?" I just thought I'd, I just thought I'd throw, throw that out there this morning, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing but the facts this morning.
Chairman, can I, I forgot one, one other thing. I was, a week and a half ago or so, at the National Association of Counties Conference in Nashville, San Diego County Supervisor Greg Cox was elected as President of NACO, and he had many appointments, and one of those appointments he made is, "I will be the Vice Chair of the Payment Subcommittee of the Public Land Steering Committee," so focusing on PILT payments and SRS, schools dollars, and that's kind of our, our main primary focus, so I will be participating over the next year more with that organization.
Does that involve more travel?
I hope so.
Yeah, I, I want to say thank you to Supervisor Crocker, that we've, we've, we've been an kind of on-again, off-again participant with NACO, primarily it's been to support California Supervisors when they run for, for the presidency, but we've never really stayed with it because we've not had anybody actively participate, so I'm very pleased that Supervisor Crocker's doing that, because we've always felt, what's the point of belonging to an organization if you don't participate? I just wanted to let you know that I will be in Sacramento on this Thursday for a CSAC Executive Committee meeting, and then while I'm there, I will also be meeting with the Commissioned Staff and some of our folks from the San Joaquin Water Infrastructure Authority to talk about next steps in securing the $171 million that was allocated to us by the Water Commission for the construction of Temperance Flat. That's all I want to say, we will not be meeting next week, so if you show up at 9:00 you will be greeted by an empty building, but otherwise, I do want to say something about the, the fires that are occurring here in California, you know, the fire, the car fire is now over 100,000 acres, the Ferguson Fire is close to 60,000 acres, and talking with, with the Chief this morning and looking, following the map and so forth, it's probably gonna run over 20,000 acres before they get a handle on it, only 30% contained, very rough terrain. Loss of life has not been limited to firefighters, we know that up in the car fire, we've had civilians, I think four at this point, and there's still a number of people not accounted for. So these are tragedies that we need to be thinking about, keeping in our prayers, our, our fellow citizens and folks who are in those areas, but also, it just makes me think we need to get even more involved in activities to prevent these from happening, so, because fires are going to happen, but they don't have to be of this magnitude, they don't have to be, for instance, the firefighter that died on Sunday, died from a falling tree, wasn't, wasn't by fire, it was while he was working in an area trying to clear brush and prepare an area for, for, to stop the fire from advancing, and a dead tree, of which we have, only in, even our own county, over 28 million, fell on him and killed him. So these are things that are foreseeable and can be treated, but we have to become, you know, we have to take a very different view of managing our forests, and I'm just hopeful that the lesson we will learn from these fires and the catastrophes that they have in human life and the loss of personal property and real property is that we have got to change the way we do things, so that's my comments this morning. At this time, I'm gonna present a proclamation to approve the month of August 2018 as Child Support Awareness Month on behalf of Tulare County Department of Child Support Services, and I believe our esteemed Department Ed Roger Dixon's here to make a presentation, and I'll present the proclamation to him, but I assume you want to make a few comments to begin.
Yes, I approach.
Absolutely.
Approach the bench.
We don't, we're not formal like a courtroom, you, you have permission at all times.
Good morning, Board, Supervisors, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to you two distinguished guests that we have here to acknowledge our proclamation. I have Janice Bush, she's our Regional Administrator at the State Department of Child Support Services, and I have Mr. David Kilgore, he's Visalia's own, has been just newly appointed the State Director of Child Support Services, and I'm very excited and we're very proud to have David to be part of the state leading our charge, but we're more proud that he comes from Tulare County.
Yeah.
He started his, his career with the Child Support Services here in our, in our county.
Very good, very good, yes. Please say a few words, it's nice to ha, welcome home.
Well, thank you, it's a pleasure to be home, my family and fans and everybody hails and still resides here, so very happy to come back, visit with everybody, don't have to get the hotel room, yeah, with folks, so, pleasure to be here, yes, a whole month and a, and a week up at the state, previously I've been down in Southern California with Riverside County, but it's a pleasure to be working up at the state and being collaborative with all the local child support agencies across California, Tulare in particular, Roger and I have always had a great relationship and have collaborated back and forth time and again across our careers here, so it's a pleasure to be here, not only is it Child Support Awareness Month, but we're here celebrating with Tulare County, their performance has always been exceptional, and this past year has been no exception, and so we were down here awarding them a bronze certificate for some of the efforts that they've been leading and the activities that they've been doing for this community in the realm of child support that's above and beyond their peers across the state, so very happy to be celebrating with them, and I'll be out in Porterville, I'm visiting with their staff, and I met with their staff yesterday, so it's fun to be back and, and meeting with folks I've worked with in the past, so thank you.
Very good, please present the proclamation. If you would, come on back. Picture of all of us together, too.
That was...
Get the oil out for this thing. Yes, please, come on up.
This is a collective effort here.
Very good, yeah, I, I always wondered, what's the difference between collaboration and collusion?
Collusion is not a crime.
That's a question.
Got an army here.
Yeah, this is great. Takes a village, okay, so declaring August 2018 as Child Support Awareness Month in Tulare County, whereas, the vision of Tulare County Department of Child Support Services is to educate and empower families with knowledge and resources to promote the well-being of children, and whereas, the mission of Tulare County Department of Child Support Services is to enrich our community by partnering with parents to obtain accurate child support orders to assist families in meeting medical and financial needs, and whereas, more than 23,000 children benefit each year from services provided by the Tulare County Department of Child Support Services with approximately $40 million in child support expected to be collected and distributed in federal fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018, enabling children to grow up in a healthy environment where they receive the financial, medical, and emotional support they need from both parents is among the department's highest priorities, and whereas, August 2018 has been selected as Child Support Awareness Month in the state of California, now therefore be resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim August 2018 as Child Support Awareness Month in Tulare County, signed Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpoel, Amy Shuckman, and Steve Worthley, and Mike Dennis.
Roger, I noticed there's a new face, is it, did you, did you want to maybe, since they're already up here, maybe share with the, the board?
I apologize, we have been honored and I've been fortunate to bring on our new Assistant Director, Mr. Bennett Hoffman, Mr. Hoffman comes from the great state of Minnesota, brings a wealth of child support knowledge to our department, over 20-plus years, and welcome to have him on board.
Thank you.
So instead of the "brain drain," it's a "brain gain," thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, just to, just to make a comment, I want to thank all of our child support employees who are here, and I want to thank Roger, the, the job that you do is so critical to providing stable lives for children in our county, but it also shows even more of a, a need that we have throughout the county to really get into our lives of our residents to emphasize the importance of family, you know, 23,000 children receiving or benefiting from a child support payment shows there's a tremendous need, the work you do is so important, but we also have a lot of work in front of us within HHSA and other departments, probation, everybody, we all have to work together to do what we can to help stabilize the family unit in Tulare County, just want to make those comments.
Any other comments, members?
Can I just echo those comments that he made, that it's truly his, uh...
Entertainer motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval.
Second. Bush by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Dennis, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Move now to public comments, anyone wishing to address the Board of Matters which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are welcome to come forward this time and present your public comments, please give us your name and address.
My name is Kevin Caskey, I reside at 12843 Avenue 328 Visalia. I've had the pleasure of being appointed to two boards by the Board of Supervisors of Tulare County, one being the Tulare County Museum Board, the second being Delta Vector Control Board. In relation to the museum board, I've been there four years, over four years, never has a member of the Board of Supervisors been to one of our board meetings. Delta Vector Control Board, I've been there for over two years, never has a member of the Board of Supervisors been to one of our board meetings. I know particularly from the discussion this morning that everyone is really busy, so am I, and here, I am here to invite you to attend one of our board meetings, doesn't matter who you are, which one you have an interest in, but please come. The next board meeting of the Delta Vector Control Board is August 8th at 7:00 PM, we meet here in Visalia at the Delta Vector Control offices. We have a fantastic lab, we have fantastic people who are employed there, biologists, and it's a, it's a really important thing that we do out there at Delta Vector Control. The next meeting of the Tulare County Museum Board is August 16th, we meet at the Tulare County Museum at 2:00 PM in the afternoon, and I invite you to come to one of those board meetings. Normally, the board meetings last an hour, an hour and a half, and you're all invited, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Strasburg, thank you for your participation in the county issues that we deal with so every day, thank you so much. Anybody else wish to address a public comment? Charlie's not coming forward, and I should have made a comment earlier, but there is, he, he, I, I had this on my desk up here, and I asked Mel what it was, she said she didn't know, and Charlie was snuck up here, I guess, and put it up here for me, but...
Security breach.
It's, it's a... It's a firefighter camp, and this, this, this is talking about one that was held in Early Mart, and apparently we have one coming up in Cutler-Rosey this coming week, is that right, Charlie? See, I forced you to come up here and give us the good news.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Spot, and Ms. Peterson. We had a fire camp that we held in Early Mart last month, and we're doing the same model in the Cutler-Rosey area, doing it Ledbetter Park Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday morning, great program, gets everybody involved, hitting some of our local communities, like to see the program expanded, and other than the firefighter with all the tattoos on the front page, it's a great community outreach program, so...
Very good, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Nine of the times.
Thanks for all your updates on the radio, Charlie, I enjoy those.
Absolutely, I'm trying to follow in your footsteps and be, have a good day.
Okay, all right, we will now take up, we will now take up our consent calendar, items 6 through 24, are there any items which board members wish to handle separately?
Item 22.
Item 22, handled separately, anything else?
Okay, I would move for approval of balance of consent calendar.
All right, does the public have any other comments about the count, about the consent calendar, seeing none, they have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, a second by Supervisor Shuckman, is that right?
Vanderpoel.
Vanderpoel, please cast your votes, votes are unanimous. Item number 22 is approval of an agreement with the Tulare County, Tulare, I'm sorry, Tulare Joint Union High School District provides school resource officer services. You had a question?
Yeah, my, my question is regard to how, how we determine which schools receive this, I know that I, I had a few inquiries from some school districts over the summer, and they were very appreciative of the Sheriff's collaboration with them, they were interested in participating again, and so I just wanted some clarity as far as how, they weren't able to participate this year, they had the funds, but, but there were, I, I don't know all the details, but I...
Correct. Assistant Sheriff Tom Sigley for Sheriff Boudreaux's Sheriff's Office. Basically, we've had numerous requests for SROs throughout the county, the ones that we've already had in place, like this one here on item 22, which is the old Teacove, which is now Charter Alternative High School, that's a renewal, we've had a few requests from other schools throughout the county offering to supply the funding for a new position, but the way we're looking at it and the way the sheriff, it's up to the sheriff on what we can fill and based off resources, so even if they give us the money, it doesn't mean we can create a body for it.
What is the additional cost to the, to the department, so the $88,000 that is, doesn't pay for the full position, I take it, so there's additional dollars that are...
It's split between, on this one, it's split between, I think there's also included in this is another officer from Tulare, PD, for the grant.
So you may, she might share those costs in between the Sheriff's Office?
Correct, we, we've received several requests from, you know, schools in, I think, Early Mart or Pixley and Strathmore, and everybody's wanting to pay for an officer, but it's a matter of whether or not we can, we'd love to do it, absolutely, but even with the vacancies we have, we continually hiring, trying to fill those for patrol services, so I mean, we, we fill what we can fill.
So is it, is, so I'm curious, and this was your question, but is, is it a vacancy issue or is it a financial issue for the sheriff?
It's not a financial, because the schools are offering to...
They pay 100% of the cost?
Correct.
Oh, I see, okay, so just a matter of...
It's a matter of getting more bodies, which we're continually, as you guys know, we're continually hiring and continue going through the process.
All right.
So we didn't want to commit to something we couldn't 100% give them.
Absolutely.
All those communities, just a note on that, all those communities that have requested an SRO have a CBO in place, which spend time at the school as well.
Very good, thank you. Assistant Sheriff.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Dennis, please cast your votes, votes are unanimous. A little bit early yet, so we'll take up our first untimed item, item 25 is to receive a status update from the Board Supervisor Staff on the Tulare County, Tulare Kern Funding Region Disadvantaged Community Integrated Regional Water Management Involvement Program. That's a long one. Morning Denise.
Denise England, Water Resources Program Director for the Board of Supervisors, good morning Board, CAO, and Council, just wanted to provide a quick update this morning on the Integrated Regional Water Management Disadvantaged Community Involvement Program, and this program is for the Tulare Kern Funding Region, as you may recall, your board approved an agreement with the Department of Water Resources to carry out this program in the amount of $3.4 million, and we have started the program and the one was Friday this day, and then we have, and then it turned a green. So there was, thank you, there was a, a couple of previous disadvantaged community studies done in this region, your board headed up the Tulare Lake Basin Disadvantaged Community Study, which was completed in 2014, and then there was a more centralized DAC study done in the Kings Basin that was completed in 2013, and so this region had a really good foundation to move forward on this program. So the, the DAC Involvement Program objectives are to work collaboratively, collaboratively to involve DAX, community-based organizations, and stakeholders in the integrated regional water management planning efforts, increase understanding and identify water management needs of disadvantaged communities in the funding area, and develop strategies and long-term solutions to address DAC water management needs. And, a little bit about the program, only one program was allowed per funding region, so we had to come together with all of the IRWIM groups in the region to put together the proposal that was approved, and the program kicked off in April of this year, although we had been working on the proposal and working through the contracting process for about two years, and it, it allowed a number of eligible activities, the needs assessment was the only activity that was required of the program, and then there was another, a menu of other activities that we could choose from, and we picked a handful of those. a handful of those. So the Tulare Kern Funding Region encompasses seven IRWIM groups, and those are listed there. And this is what it looks like on the map. So it covers four counties, so it's a very large geographic region. And the program adopted this charter vision statement or idea, and that's to promote the state objectives by conducting a needs assessment, supporting project development, and promoting ongoing DAC participation in IRWIM groups. This region really wanted to see money flowing to actual project development so that when the next rounds of IRWIM implementation funding and other funding opportunities came available, the DAC projects were ready to go into those applications. Because as you know, disadvantaged communities have really hard time putting together engineering studies and preliminary reports and design work to get to the construction phase. We're utilizing third-party facilitation in the decision-making process of the Project Advisory Committee. Some of those key decision points that we knew we would need help with is defining underrepresented communities. We know what a DAC is. The state has a definition for that, but this program's also supposed to look at underrepresented communities, so the PAC is working on what that definition is for this funding area, scoping the database update, which we're talking about today, creating the DAC engagement program, identifying educational material that's to be creative, and then writing those project development guidelines and recommending projects to fund. And this third-party facilitation was funded directly through DWR. We originally had it as part of our proposal, but we asked DWR if they had additional funding elsewhere that they could pay for this, and so we don't have to dip into that $3.4 million. This is provided outside of that, so that's really nice. So the Project Advisory Committee is comprised of 15 members total. There's one member from each IRWIM. There's one disadvantaged community member from each IRWIM. There's one tribal member, and then there's an alternate for each of those. And the members, both the IRWIM members and the DAC members, have been seated. They've... The IRWIM groups have had a little bit of trouble identifying alternates. Asking a total of four people from each IRWIM group is a little steep, especially when there's no compensation except for spending time with us to get them to these meetings. We've also had trouble filling the tribal member seats. So in our August meeting, we have a tribal representative that's going to come and watch the meeting and then make a decision on whether or not he'll participate on an ongoing basis. So thus far, we've had four meetings. In April, it was sort of the kickoff and the charter and regrouping and understanding what the program was all about. In May, they received a needs assessment proposal. In June, they made a recommendation on that proposal and received a DAC education and outreach proposal. And then in August, they'll be making a recommendation on the education and outreach proposal. So through the fall and into the end of the year, we'll be really gearing up and carrying out those DAC education and outreach activities. And then the needs assessment, there will be a preliminary report and review of that, and that will feed into developing those project development criteria. And so that we have identified March of 2019 to start reviewing those projects and actually turning out money to fund project development activities. So these are the activities that this particular program funds. It's a... There's the needs assessment, the DAC education and engagement program, project development, there's a final report component, project management, which has been contracted already to Provost and Pritchard, and grant administration, which covers the county's cost to administer this grant. So the needs assessment is required, and the PAC has recommended that Provost and Pritchard perform the work. For a lot of synergistic reasons, the Provost and Pritchard did the previous database, and it makes sense for them to update that. And they'll be updating the database from the TLB study, which includes new data and update of data, a better framework of organizing the data. There's been a lot of technological advances since 2014, which is hard to believe because it's only been four years, but the ability to do a web portal and some of the things we wanted to do in the original study that we weren't able to afford are now much more affordable and easier to access. And the needs assessment deliverables are the database, the web-based portal, and then a preliminary report and a final report. And this is just a diagram that you can look at if you have trouble sleeping. It just identifies that we're in the needs assessment phase, which is in the top corner there, under the red, and how this needs assessment feeds into the other pieces of the grant program activities. And this is a diagram of how, as you can see, Provost and Pritchard is an engineering firm, and so they like to have, you know, little flow charts and boxes so that everybody can understand how the decisions are being made and how it flows into everything else. So today, I've provided a status update, and I'm asking to approve an amendment to Tulare County Agreement Number 28482 with Provost and Pritchard to increase the dollar amount from $343,000 to $635,000, which is the difference in cost to include the needs assessment tasks under Provost and Pritchard's existing agreement. And I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Questions, comments?
What's the timeframe that we think we're going to start working on project development?
So the idea is that by the end of this year, so December 2018, we start to have the project development criteria in place so that the IRWIM groups can start choosing projects and recommending those to the PAC and beginning to fund those by about March 2019. The grant program runs through 2021, but we really want to get those projects developed. Right now, DWR thinks that the next round of implementation funding will come out, they say, early 2019, which usually means late 2019, so we're hoping that some of those projects would fit into that schedule.
Other questions, comments? Entertainer motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
By Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. We will now take up our first public hearing. Item number four, a request in Resource Management Agency to hold a public hearing regarding two proposed ordinances relating to marijuana cannabis regulation. Good morning, Mr. Washam.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. CAO, County Council. Mike Washam, Associate Director of Resource Management Agency. Today, before... For your consideration, is proposed revisions to the county's permanent marijuana ordinances. I'd just like to preference this by saying that we're, just as in a basic overview, we're kind of looking at status quo to go forward. Things are still in flux with the state and the Fed. So there's a very robust presentation that's been prepared. I'll go through that. And I'd just like to point out, and I'd like to thank the board, that the board thoroughly reviews these as these... All of the documents. This is a very thick packet. Brought to our attention that there was an inadvertent page, page 310, was put in there, which is a clerical error. Network printing sometimes will give priority to one printer and an inadvertent sheet shot in there, but this just shows that your board really reviews these documents thoroughly, and I appreciate that. So with that, I'll start the presentation.
If only you would.
So the overview of the presentation will be a basic, some background information, where we are now, the proposed updates to the ordinances, continued threats to public safety, health, and welfare, secret analysis and determinations, and then the requested action items, and then we'll be open for questions, comments. Just one thing. I know that we've started our process of opening public hearings at the beginning of the presentation.
Yes, please. Thank you for reminding me. The public hearing is now open.
Very good.
It missed page 310, but caught that one.
So the county has previously enacted permanent regulations back in 2009, I believe, and then currently, we're under interim ordinances as Prop 64 came to light. So we're currently under these interim ordinances which are expiring, and that's the reason why we need to come to the board today. And as everyone knows, state marijuana laws have been radically transformed during the past three years, and they continue to be. So there's no clarity yet at the state level. So a brief history. Prop 215, back in 96, established the medical marijuana patients and primary caregivers. SB 420, back in 2004, created the medical ID card, the Cannabis... Medical Cannabis Regulation Safety Act in 2015, and then Prop 64 for the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, which decriminalized in California possession, use, transport, and purchasing of limited amounts of marijuana for adults 21 and over, as well as cultivation of up to six plants for adults. And it introduced basically the concept of adult use. Prop 64 expressly allows local jurisdictions to regulate the recreational marijuana activities, including reasonable regulations for indoor cultivation activities, which we have in place currently in the interim ordinance, prohibitions of outdoor cultivation activities upon the grounds of a private residence, California Attorney General's determining the non-medical use of marijuana is lawful in the state under federal law. That... There might be some changes there, but that, again, everything's in flux as we're talking. And prohibition or restrictions on marijuana activities within buildings owned leased or occupied by local government agencies. So the Prop 64 really allows local jurisdictions to maintain their police powers over land use regulations, and that's what we're looking at here. So SB 94, Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation Safety Act repealed most of the original medical medicinal act, and it basically merged the licensing and regulatory scheme for both medical and adult-use commercial under 64, and it created some dual licensing at the state level. Allows businesses to cultivate, transport, distribute, store, manufacture, process, and/or sell medicinal and adult-use cannabis and cannabis products through a state license as local jurisdictions allow.
Would you pronounce that acronym, please, just...
You know, I looked at it last night, and I decided to skip over it. It does pop up again, I believe.
There it is.
So in late 2017, the state started issuing temporary state licenses. Again, they had a deadline of January 1st of this year to issue licenses. They didn't have their final regulations in place or their final processes and procedures. Therefore, they actually started issuing temporary permits or licenses. And they're... They've only adopted their emergency regulations, and there's been proposals set forward currently just a few weeks ago of what their permanent regulations may look like. But again, they did that back in August of last year as well, and it never came to fruition. So we still are in a very state of flux as far as the state regulations go. And no temporary licenses, and those are state licenses because we don't issue licenses right now through there because of their interim ordinances. Under SB 94, counties and cities have retained authority over the commercial cannabis in their jurisdictions, including but not limited to imposing local zoning, land use requirements, which part of this zoning ordinance component of it addresses. After passage of the Safety Act, Marijuana Safety Act, the county adopted the interim ordinance, later extended by a further extension, which prohibited establishment of new or expansion of existing medical marijuana entities, including collectives and cooperatives, prohibited the county from issuing any building permits, occupancy permits, licenses, or other land use entitlements for related marijuana activities. And that urgency ordinance is expiring on August 14th, and that's why we are here today to enact a permanent... We can no longer extend that again. We want to do a permanent ordinance. And again, when I say permanent, that doesn't mean that in a year, two, or three, once the state gets everything aligned, we can look at it again if the board so chooses. After Prop 64, the board adopted the urgency ordinance regarding the non-medical, the recreational adult-use marijuana. And again, that urgency interim ordinance prohibited all commercial, non-medical marijuana activities, outdoor, non-medical marijuana cultivation on private residences, and indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana unless it complied with certain reasonable regulations which we put in place, the indoor type of grows, and there's some requirements on that. So again, this component of it, of our interim ordinance, will expire this December 1st. So we're going to talk a little bit about what we're proposing to update the ordinance to. Generally, the same limits specified in the previous ordinances will continue forward with state law, you know, in... Consistent with the state law with goals to increase awareness of law, laws and environmental issues, to reduce the confusion and clarify which activities are permissible, and really to permit better enforcement of these activities. So specifically, we're looking at two as the appropriate number, which is actually what's existing currently in the county, M-licenses for Tulare County, which is for the medical sales. And one of the reasons why we came up with two is, again, we're trying to keep status quo. That's what we have going on right now. There's dangers associated with concentrating large amounts of cannabis in one area. If you have too widespread of opportunities, you really create too easy access, too easily accessibility for youth. There's a lower number of cardholders and a low number of inquiries lately regarding this as well, which I'll speak of a little bit later. The ability of county residents to grow their own, so to speak, so... And our current experience with the current collectives, and it's easier for the sheriff to patrol fewer locations rather than widespread. As many cities are much more dense, it's a little easier to control monitoring facilities as opposed to a county-wide situation. And we also don't want to oversaturate the market. You know, Farmersville allows it, but they haven't even had any takers yet, so it's really a point of balance. You don't want to oversupply, then you'll have issues with that as well. So it's not really the process of that we're restricting people that need it and want it. They do have access to it, so we're not over-restricting this. Outdoor and commercial regulations. The county's prohibitions on outdoor and commercial adult-use activities really, again, attempt to reduce criminal threats, fire hazards, especially related to the honey oil labs and other things like that, that there's... Those continue to go on, fires and explosions, the nuisance of... That the odor of these grows creates for adjoining properties, nearby properties, and other environmental threats. Proposed indoor regulations are... The indoor regulations that we have are really common sense. They're easy to implement, low-cost limitations to deter crime, reduce hazards to youth and children, reduce, again, fire hazards, protect property rights and property values, and prevent inadvertent uses from becoming established in areas before adequate regulations are actually fully developed. Again, all of this does not unreasonably restrict access to marijuana under Prop 64. Cannabis is an agricultural product. Under land use zoning issues, marijuana under Prop 64 is considered an ag product for licensing purposes, but marijuana cultivation provides some unique challenges and dangers. Currently, land use, in our land use code, we never contemplated marijuana as a permissible agricultural use or other horticultural product or agricultural operations. So we're going to have to take a look at that as well going long-term, too, because we allow agriculture by right, because this is an agricultural county. We never contemplated that marijuana was considered agriculture, so there's some adjustments that we'll have to make on that as well. Proposing and intent of the updated ordinances. So again, like I said, we're really wanting to go status quo with respect to the number of cannabis businesses, entities that are operating in unincorporated areas, and the types of commercial cannabis activities that can be undertaken in the unincorporated areas. So this doesn't really legalize any activity that wouldn't be legal under state or federal law. So again, those are in flux as we speak, still at the federal level. I know there's some changes, proposed changes, but still, to date, there's nothing been formally changed on that. So the intent of our updated ordinances are to clarify which medicinal and adult-use cannabis activities are permissible under local ordinance and in light of the new state laws, including any restrictions that should be placed on such activities. any restrictions that should be placed on such activities. Now, here's a graph, and I know you can't really see this, but this shows what our surrounding counties are doing. And so it shows Kings, Kern, Fresno, Madera, Merced, Stanislas, and Nino. And most all of those you can see have banned across the board, commercial, recreation activities. And so what we're looking at is very consistent with what's going on locally with our surrounding jurisdictions. What some of our local cities are doing, Visalia's banned across the board, Tulare's banned, and right down the line, except for Woodlake and Farmersville. Woodlake, I know, I just heard on the radio today, they're expanding, and they're actually annexing some land in that has an old packing shed on it that's going to be for indoor cultivation as well. So again, we're not, you know, county residents have access and availability if they choose, so we're not overly regulating. And here's some more of the cities I think have a ban. Farmersville, again, they have a ban currently on commercial retail, but they do have cultivation, which they haven't had any takers on. They actually lowered the taxes, tax rate, to try to encourage a company to come forward, and they still haven't had success. Now they're considering opening a retail location, haven't done that yet, but they're considering that. So again, the demand doesn't seem to be as robust as once maybe thought. So specifically, what our update to our ordinance looks like. We're suggesting prohibiting adult-use commercial cannabis activities and commercial testing facilities. To phase out collective cooperatives, which this mirrors the state law, how they're kind of merging these into one. Require an M-license for commercial medical operations with two medical, commercial licenses maximum in the county, which is the same as we are currently doing, so again, status quo. State will issue the licenses, the county does not issue the licenses. The state, when an application goes to the state, the state refers back to the county to ask if this is an allowable use, if it meets zoning, if it's allowed, and then we can confirm, and then the state will be the one that actually issues the license. Three, maintain the same zoning and setbacks from sensitive uses, except for residents, again, which changed that regulation to more aligned to what the state has decided on The M-licenses would endanger in some types of activities, except for profit allowed. I'm a little stumbling right there, I'm sorry. Maintain the same maximum number of cannabis plants that can be cultivated by M-licenses as for collectives and co-ops, which stands at 99 plants. So again, it's not a commercial cultivation license, but they are able to do up to 99 plants. Maintain and clarify which building regulations apply to commercial cannabis activities. Again, those are previously located in Part 4, Chapter 11 of the Ordinance Code, and other state and local requirements. And then to maintain the ban on outdoor cultivation to the fullest extent allowed. To maintain the same number of medicinal cannabis plants that can be cultivated by medical cannabis patients and their primary caregivers, which equates to six mature or 12 immature plants per patient with a 24-plant maximum, except where zone for commercial cannabis activities. Acknowledge the Prop 64, an ability to cultivate under state law, six plants for adult use in private residence. Again, we're not limiting that, we don't have jurisdiction to be able to ban that, so persons that want to grow up to six plants themselves through reasonable regulations are available to do that. Extend and clarify the county's reasonable regulations on indoor personal cultivation. Maintains the same indoor cultivation regulations that we have in our interim ordinance, so again, status quo. They'll also need to comply with new requirements in Part 5 of Chapter 11 of the ordinance code, and which looks at drawing of water without a permit is prohibited, portable fire extinguishers are required now, secure access is required, contact information consent forms are required, prohibition of consumption at a county fair or district association events is prohibited. That's kind of unique, because some people have tried to do some fairs and some festivals at county fair sites, and we're making sure that we have addressed that in this ordinance. And finally, to clarify that cannabis is not an agricultural product for the purposes of interpreting our zoning ordinance or other land use regulations. So we're clarifying that.
Sorry, Maryland.
So there's penalties for public nuisance abatement, according to our county ordinance code, recovery fees, so essentially, it'll be enforced the same way that we're enforcing other code compliance issues. Misdemeanor punishment punishable by up to $1,000, or imprisonment up to six months, or by both, for each and every day, a separate and distinct violation. There's civil penalties, administrative fees, and any other provided by statute ordinance or law. So there are penalties associated with, when you do an ordinance and you have no teeth in it, it's just writing on paper. So there are some enforcement associated, and some penalties and fees associated with So I'll briefly touch on safety issues. Again, there's uncertainty at the state marijuana laws, even after Prop 64 and 94, they continue to clean up, have cleanup legislation, things are still in flux, state agencies have proposed but not yet finalized the adoption of any final regulations regarding both medical or adult-use cannabis licenses. So it's really unclear how, what they will ultimately do, and how that would potentially impact the county, so that, again, that's why we really want to go with the status quo at this point. Negative impacts of decriminalization. Colorado and other states have decriminalized recreational marijuana, and have noted some harmful effects on public health and safety, including increase in exposure of youth to marijuana. In Colorado, apparent increase in honey oil extraction accidents and explosions since decriminalization. If you look at the chart, you've gone from 2013, when it hadn't been legalized yet, 18, and then once it becomes legalized, there's actually more explosions than there were before it was legalized. So there's an ongoing concern with safety issues there. Calaveras County began allowing medical marijuana cultivation in 2016, but then they later reversed their course. Only a fraction of the total number of growers actually registered, $5,000 registration fee for registering for commercial cannabis, but departments said that that was still inadequate to cover the costs that were related to monitoring, and permitting, and enforcing those codes. So it's actually still, yes, there's money coming in, but there's also a lot more on the enforcement side going out. In October 2015, three individuals were killed who were allegedly stealing marijuana from a grower, and there are second-degree murder trials underway, or pending right now. And due to marijuana-related safety concerns, the Calaveras Ag Commissioner Inspectors generally accompanied, are accompanied by sheriff's deputies when performing certain inspections. So again, additional costs, additional safety concerns. Criminal issues, especially since cannabis is still illegal under federal law. Again, it's a high street value, cannabis businesses can't use banks yet, so it's a cash business. Looking at, a lot of this cannabis is still grown for export, the drug cartels issues are still there, the illegal grows in forests, the odors and nuisance alerting people to the presence of cannabis and the potential crimes, especially with outdoor cultivations. Another issue, and I'll touch on it here, well, criminal issues, threats, thefts, robberies, and potential violent crimes related to marijuana cultivation or distribution. Again, it's a cash-heavy business. I believe that at the state level, they're looking for delivery, they're allowing up to $10,000 of product at a time to be in a vehicle, and that would be ripe for someone knocking things off, knocking someone off, following them down to the delivery point, because if you're carrying $10,000 worth of product, that means you're going to be coming back with $10,000 of cash, because it's a small cash business. So there's a vulnerability out there for theft and robbery. Illegal possession of marijuana, again, we've touched on the honey oil labs, there's six labs being investigated in 2015 in the county, and in 2016, there was five labs. You're looking at child endangerment with chemicals and the associated activities. We all remember seeing the bottled water program where there was, out in Seville, you saw the bottled water that was being delivered to the people being utilized for watering the plants, and you also saw children's play toys out in the middle of the grove of marijuana plants. So there's obviously some concerns ongoing with that. Additional sheriff concerns are that it's not clear that decriminalization of marijuana will reduce the demand for black-market cannabis, or the illegal cultivations of cannabis in Tulare County. And again, we continue to see, day after, I think Sunday's paper, I remember reading a bust down in Springville area, and a week before that, there was another fairly major one with 21,000 plants. So it continues on, even though there are legal operations in California, the black-market side is still very active. And you can see that by, again, in Colorado, with the continued honey oil explosions actually expanding after it was legalized. So there's fewer locations where cannabis is concentrated, would help reduce some of that danger, and make it much more easy for law enforcement to enforce those when there's just, again, status quo of two spots currently. There's also fire hazards, there's been illegal remodeling associated with grows for the lighting systems, again, the honey oil extraction. Environmental effects includes the chemicals, insecticides, rodenticides, hunting and poaching, and the water usage, those are all things, a lot of those illegal grows in the forest areas, they'll contaminate the ground, and then they would just walk away, they'll take their guns, they'll take their products, and then they'll just leave a mess in the forest that we have to address. Hazards to landowners, again, if cannabis cultivation by tenants without consent, you know, again, that could be an impact to the property value of those. So again, we require consent of the homeowner, so renters can't just do what they want to do at their sites that they're renting. And again, we've all mentioned, again, the dangers to youth and increased accessibility. So as far as SEQA goes, we want to do analysis on SEQA. The goal of the proposed ordinances recommended for your adoption hearing is to clarify our local regulations as necessary to reflect the recent changes in state law, but to otherwise maintain the status quo with respect to the substance of the ordinances. There's three exemptions, SEQA exemptions, we're utilizing for this ordinance amendment. One is the non-project exemption. These ordinances really would not constitute a project within the meaning of Section 15378 of the state SEQA guidelines, because they have no potential in resulting in direct physical change in the environment, or indirect reasonably foreseeable changes, because the proposed ordinance merely keeps the status quo. So there's no change in that. Second one is the general rule exception, exemption is, or common sense exemption. As it can be seen with certainty, that there's no possibility that activity in question, adoption of these ordinances, will result in any adverse impact to the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Tulare County. Again, these ordinances were designed to maintain the status quo in unincorporated areas with respect to the allowable cannabis use for recreational medical activities. So again, status quo, it's really not an impact as far as SEQA goes. And then finally, Class 8 exemption. These ordinances, updates are categorically exempt from SEQA, because the action is consistent with Section 15308, Class 8, actions by regulatory agencies for protection of the environment. One of the stated intentions of Prop 64 was to take non-medical marijuana and sales out of the illegal market, and try to bring it in under a regulatory structure that will really protect public safety, health, and environment. So again, it's really no impact as far as SEQA goes. Again, this one will just reiterate what I mentioned.
Covered all those.
I covered all of this, I believe so. So with that, the request to the board today is to introduce and waive the first reading of Chapter 11, Part 5 of the Tulare County Ordinance Code, introduce and waive the first reading of Section 15.3 of Ordinance Number 352. Hold a public hearing, which we already are doing, and set the second reading of the ordinances, and approve the ordinances on August 14th, 2018. Direct the clerk to publish summary or summaries of the ordinances before the second reading as required by law. Then on the 14th, we'll come in and ask to approve the, on consent, this will be proposed to be on consent, as approved the non-project exemptions, waive the second reading, adopt the ordinances, waive the second reading of both, actually, both of the ordinances. Direct the clerk to publish a summary or summaries, and direct the environmental assessment officer of the Tulare County Resource Management Agency to file a notice of exemption with the Tulare County clerk, and designate the RMA Director as the official Tulare County contact for state cannabis licensing authorities. So with that, that concludes staff's report. Open for questions or comments?
Just a comment, I have to come up with a way to pronounce that acronym, it's Macrisa, it's actually an Irish. Any comments or questions by members of the Board?
Well, I would, as this groundwater management plan goes forward, it's going to be real critical to these growers, because I've already took two of them down in my district in the last month, who were stealing water from the farmers, because you're 12 to 15 gallons a day per plant. People don't realize the consumption of water that these plants take in, especially with the heat wave we're in right now, it might be even more than that. So water's going to be a real factor in the future, I believe, and I'm all for this ordinance.
Any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing, which we've been conducting, and now it is time for the public to have their opportunity to speak to the board. Anybody here today wishing to speak to the board on this matter? Which goes to the demand. There's nobody here, so we will now close the public comment period, and bring it back to the board for action. For approval, by Supervisor Ennis?
I'll second that one.
Seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, and this has not always been the case on cannabis issues. In the past, you used to have a number of people who showed up for the association.
Maybe what we should do is set the hearing for a little bit later in the day, so it's not so early in the morning.
And offer chips up front.
We'll do that next year at the Pixley Board meeting.
And now we will go to item number five, which is also a public hearing. It's a request from the Resource Management Agency to hold a public hearing in accordance with the Government Code, Section 54986, to consider the adoption of modifications to the Tulare County Area Transit Policies. Good morning, Ross. Public hearing is now open.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors, Mr. Spott and Ms. Peterson. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak today. I am here to present a couple of proposed policy changes for Tulare County Area Transit. These changes deal, one, with the age at which the senior discount fare is available, and the second deals with the service level offered on certain holidays. This start here is just to outline the current fare structure. What really I'm here today to talk about is the age and who qualifies for the senior discounted fare. For the fixed route, qualifying for the discount brings the price down from $2 to $1, or for the dialer ad system brings the price from $3 down to $2. So it could save, at the current rate structure, a dollar per ride for individuals who qualify as seniors. The discount's also available to the disabled Medicare cardholders as well. And then TCAG also offers a discounted program for military veterans, so TCAG pays the difference for those individuals who also qualify for the discounted rate. Currently, the sort of driving force behind this... Currently, the sort of driving force behind this, there is a monthly transit forum held by TCAG for all of the county transit agencies, and during this, we have been pushing towards standardizing various requirements and policies across all agencies. And one of the policies that was discussed was the age for children and the age for the senior discount. The agreement on the age for children was what the county's policy already was, and the agreement on the age for the senior discount became 65, which had been the pre-existing policy for part-of-all transit, Tulare Intermodal Express, Visalia Transit, and the Woodlake Dialer Ride System. The only two agencies that were not at 65 were TCAT as well as Dinuba Area Regional Transit. And as you can see, for several other agencies in the area, 65 is also the standard, including Fresno Air Express, Fresno County Rural Transit Agency, and Kings Area Rural Transit and the Clovis Stage Line. The other sort of local one that does not quite fit into that is Kern County Transit, which is six, which holds their senior discount age at 62, which is still higher than the 60 at which the county's current policy is. The other requested change deals with the holiday schedule. On certain days of the year, there is no service offered, but on certain days, certain holidays, there is limited service. The limited service currently is set for the service level that is offered on Saturdays. The holidays that follow the limited service schedule are Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, Veterans Day, the day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve. Currently, all of our services have the same schedule on Saturday as Sunday, the only difference being Route 50, which offers service between Dinuba, London, Traver, Delft Colony. It runs about four loops on Saturdays. And part of the concern with the current holiday schedule is, A, there is very, very limited ridership on these routes on these holidays, and B, the Saturday service level offered is higher than the Sunday service, so in certain situations, if Veterans Day or Christmas Eve falls on a Sunday, even though it's a holiday, we are technically supposed to provide additional service, which just makes very little sense. And further, some of these days, and I believe it's Martin Luther King Junior Day, there is no service for Dinuba Area Regional Transit, which we connect with, so we would not have anything to connect with. Again, it's only Route 50 that it's affected. It only runs four runs, it's kind of an hour-long loop from, again, Dinuba to London to Traver to Delft Colony and back. It does that four times per day on the Saturday schedules. The Route 50 does not have any Sunday service, so that's essentially what we're looking at, and it would, again, be limited to only this route that would be affected by this current policy. Saturday service for this route had been added previously as a result of the unmet needs process. The unmet need did not request any such service for this route on these particular holidays, any of them. So the request here is to hold the public hearing, which we are currently in the process of. It's to adopt the new minimum age of 65 years or older for individuals to qualify for the Tulare County Area Transit Senior Discounted Fare and authorize the RMA Agency Director and/or his designee to implement the fare change beginning August 4. That was selected because that is the day that the other transit agencies will be implementing some of their fare and policy changes. And the third request is to adjust the service level offered on Martin Luther King Junior Day, as well as President's Day, Veterans Day, the day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve, from the currently offered Saturday level service to the proposed Sunday level service.
Any questions or comments, Supervisor Venable?
Just a question, Ross. Would you comment a little bit on the utilization and what the impact of these changes is going to be? I mean, is there a heavy utilization of the transit? I know this particularly, you did mention on Route 50, but when we're talking about adjusting the age to qualify for the senior citizen discount, I'm just kind of curious what type of an impact that's going to have on our transit revenue.
In terms of transit revenue, we expect it to have a very minimal impact. It potentially could increase the fare revenue, but we expect it to be very negligible. We don't have exact numbers on the number of people who ride that fall into that five-year age window from 60 to 65, but we believe it to be on the low side, and we also believe that many of the people who fall into that age window, who are regular riders, do so using one of the monthly passes or one of the other discounted bulk fares.
Any other questions or comments?
Looking out for my elder colleagues in retirement.
I just appreciate this.
I was sort of expecting that comment.
It's, I think it goes towards the ongoing discussion, investigation about the possibility of minimizing administrative costs and coming into line with something that, for all transit providers to really collaborate, and hopefully we could get to some type of consolidated look, whatever that looks like, but I appreciate this. This is a step in the right direction.
If I may add just one comment to that, we are, as part of the ongoing transit forum, looking at the possibility of aligning all of the agencies' holiday schedules because currently we offer limited service certain days, no service other days. Some of the agencies have similar schedules, some, but it varies, and we are looking as all of the county transit agencies towards standardizing those across all systems as well.
Again, continuing our public hearing, is there anyone here today wishing to speak to the board on this matter? Now would be the time to come forward. Tom says he's thinking about it, but he's not going to, so we will close the public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
To approve?
Motion by Supervisor Crocker. Seconded by Supervisor Ennis. All in favor, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous.
Thank you.
And that will take us to then our untimed item number 26, a request from the county administrative officer to approve a salary increase for the position of Workforce Investment Board Executive Director in Bargaining Unit Number 10, effective August 5.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The matter before you is to approve a salary increase for the position of Workforce Investment Board Executive Director. This agenda item is based upon a recommendation by the Workforce Investment Board for the Executive Director, Adam Peck. As attached to the agenda item, it is revealed by the board that an outstanding recommendation is provided based upon the director's leadership and performance. I should note there would be no net county costs associated with this matter because it is fully funded by the Workforce Investment Board. Accordingly, in keeping with state law, the Board of Supervisors will consider the approval of a salary increase for the position of Workforce Investment Board Executive Director, effective August 5, 2018, in an amount of $23,292 from a total annual salary of $121,708 to $145,000, and the same standard benefits provided to Bargaining Unit 10 employees. As such, is respectfully requested approval.
Questions or comments?
No, I think it's very deserving. Adam's done a tremendous job. I remember when he was hired way back, and I served on that Workforce Investment Board, and now Amy's on there instead of me, but Adam's always done a great job. He's always been a great leader, so.
Without a mistake, Supervisor, I believe he's not, he's had cost of living increases, but there have not been any increases for many, many years.
There's not been any adjustments as far as.
Right. I would move for approval.
I would second that.
Vote by Supervisor Ennis. Seconded by Supervisor Shucklen. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And that brings us to item 27, to receive a report from the county administrative office regarding strategic financing action plans and provide direction regarding strategic financing action plans.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. The matter before you is a discussion embracing proposed strategic financing action plans. In terms of an overview, a brief discussion will be provided concerning the Strategic Financing Plan Ad Hoc Committee. There will be review of various general options. There will be discussion of proposed action plans, which are contained in detail in your packet. Then it will be requested that agency and department comments be provided, and finally, there will be requested action to receive the report and provide direction regarding the plans. By way of background, the Strategic Financing Plan Ad Hoc Committee was established in 27. It met extensively during the period 2017-2018. The purpose of the committee was to study and discuss known future fiscal challenges facing Tulare County. A number of topics were discussed. Finance Department, which resulted in some key reforms under new leadership in the financing departments of Tulare County. The retirements unfunded liability was discussed at length, and it resulted in a bond issue approved by this board in the amount of $250 million to reduce the unfunded liability. And then there were a number of other reports leading to action plans provided by the sheriff regarding South County Detention Facility, Health and Human Services with respect to future budget impacts, the Fire Department's five-year strategic plan, and the Resource Management Agency's zones of benefits affecting water and wastewater systems. In terms of a suggested framework for addressing the significant financial challenges that are affecting Tulare County next budget year and beyond, there is a set of four options for consideration. That is, in connection with the limitation of fiscal resources, the board should consider priority-based budgeting, which essentially is identifying available revenues, then looking at the funding needs for various programs and projects, and then tying those programs and projects and the funding therefore in keeping with a well-defined set of priorities, in keeping with strategic management goals, and also considering community outreach. After establishing a priority system of approaching the funding of key programs and projects, there should be consideration to the phasing of spending plans, and the action plans that are before you do in fact provide spending plans, which is essentially a timing and sequencing plan associated with the implementation of expenditures. If revenues, general revenues, or revenues from grant programs or subventions are not sufficient to address the expenditure needs of the county, then consideration should be given to deferring some of those expenditures until revenues are available to match the funding needs. And then finally, if there aren't sufficient general revenues, the board should consider limiting budget targets as the board moves ahead. In terms of specific action plans that are contained in your packet, the first one deals with the South County Detention Facility. This is primarily driven by the sheriff, but there was key input from the Health and Human Services Agency, the General Services Agency, NIT. Essentially, the proposed action plan for the opening of the facility, which probably will occur in either April or May of 2019, addresses staffing, health and medical expenses, internal service fund expenses, as well as information technology expenses. Essentially, phase one of the program, which is slated to open or be implemented next year, is $16.8 million. However, the actual cost, as delineated in the attached action plan, is $5.5 million. The reason is that the personnel costs associated with law enforcement will be filled from existing positions or by the transfer of filled positions that are at other facilities. The phase two plan, which is scheduled to occur in the future, is $8.5 million, which includes new personnel positions. The grand total for the South County Detention Facility is $25.4 million. With regard to our options, there were four. Provide general fund support for phases one and two. Pursue entrepreneurial activities, particularly in keeping with the property in Evans Facility that is slated to open next calendar year. To continue to pursue funding through grants, subvented dollars, or public financing, and the board should consider all of the above. Turning now to the Health and Human Services Agency, there are two major areas for consideration today. The in-home support services, there are a number of scenarios that have been outlined by HHSA. One, HHSA will absorb the maintenance of effort or MOE cost shift by using existing 1991 Social Services Realignment Funding or additional county fund. Scenario two addresses HHSA assuming a conservative realignment growth to mitigate the MOE cost shift. And finally, scenario three would be HHSA uses the 1991 Social Services Realignment Fund to mitigate the MOE cost shift. In terms of a suggested action plan, this office does support a combination of scenarios two and three as proposed by HHSA, in that there is budgeting and the assumption of a conservative realignment revenue growth and withdrawing from the 1991 Social Services Realignment Fund. No impacts are expected to occur to other departments at this time. However, action plans for subsequent years should be determined on a year-by-year basis approved by the Board of Supervisors. Turning now to the criminal justice and mental health aspect, there are two scenarios as suggested by HHSA. Number one, to increase general fund support to cover increasing expenses for criminal justice, health, and mental health care expenses. Or scenario two, the HHSA and the general fund, as approved by the Board of Supervisors, would share the costs of criminal justice, health, and mental health care services by a 50/50 share of the first-year cost increases, with HHSA's share decreasing by 25% annually, thereby increasing the general fund commitment. At this time, it is suggested that, per scenario two and table two, support the 50/50 split for fiscal year 2018-19, when the costs become known in 2019. For future budget years, the board should consider a review on a year-by-year basis in terms of the feasibility of providing additional revenue from the general fund and the percentage split. HHSA does note, however, that without a five-year phasing plan commitment, costs may accelerate, and HHSA may provide comments of this effect to the board when the matter is considered this morning. Turning now to the Fire Department. The Fire Department had presented at length at the Financing Committee a five-year phasing plan of capital improvements, fixed assets, and staffing. The five-year plan is delineated here. Well, you see, for next budget year, the amount would be for this plan, 3.1 million. It goes to 3.8, then 4.4, 4.4, and 2.9. It should be noted that the general fund has supported the Fire's budget over the past five years by an average of $5.7 million, with support for last fiscal year in the amount of 5.9. Based upon the information available at this time, for the next budget year, the general fund commitment could increase to approximately $9 million. In terms of options for the Fire Department, option one, general fund support. For fiscal year 2018-19 budget, provide general fund support in a feasible amount for operations and capital improvements pending closeout of all budgets, including an equipment rotation scheduled currently. 1.4 million is proposed in the capital improvement program for fire station remodels and paving, and that matter was presented to your board last, last meeting. The CIP also includes funding in the amount of 2.9 million for fire station number one to be located in the central road yard. Option two, continue to seek grant funding for increased costs for capital improvements, replacement fire engines and equipment. And finally, public financing. Consider potential public financing for capital improvements and replacement engines and equipment. That now leads us to the final action plan, Resource Management Agency's zones of benefit. There are a number of projects, short-term projects, medium projects, and long-term projects with respect to either the consolidation of water systems, the expansion of water systems, the increase of various rates, which would be subject to Prop 13. In terms of the long-term projects, it is suggested by the agency to continue to seek solutions for sustainability, review and analyze potential revenue generating activities and sources, and divest systems and transfer to other public entities to the extent feasible. In terms of the options, continue to obtain grant funding to operate effectively and sustain water and wastewater systems. Two, as some of the systems are strategically located near neighboring cities or special districts, the county could explore with these public entities a potential transfer of systems. Option three, consolidate facilities that are the county's responsibility to operate. And then finally, continue operations by using general fund support through loans to support maintenance and operations. Finally, it should be noted that a number of entities should be acknowledged for their courtesy, consideration, and cooperation, as well as their extensive expertise, the Strategic Financing Committee, the Board of Supervisors, County Council, the sheriff, HHSA, Fire, Resource Management Agency, General Services, IT, and the staff at the CAO. CAO. Finally, in terms of requested action, it is respectfully requested that the board receive this report regarding strategic financing action plans and provide direction regarding strategic financing action plans. And I will say, Mr. Chairman, that representatives from the departments are prepared to respond to any questions or to provide any comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for a very good report and being strategic about looking forward to issues that the county will be addressing in the not-too-distant future. It was one of the reasons why I had supported the idea of having an analysis done of our, actually ultimately, of all the county facilities and programs, to see what we could do to make sure we're operating as efficiently as possible to deal with these upcoming financial challenges, which is what they are going to be. So, just a couple of comments I want to make now, of course, to my colleagues, but always we want to seek grant funding, but from the standpoint of strategic financing, grants should never, in my mind, be looked at as a strategy for continued operations. Because grants come, grants go. Sometimes grants are conditional. Sometimes you get a grant, then you have to subsequently come back and backfill it with general fund dollars. And so, we always want to look for those opportunities, but I don't see them as being part of a strategy that says we expect to get the funding to fulfill these obligations as we go forward. So, at this time, I'd like to hear from my other colleagues.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think the South County Jail will be opening in October. And I think the ramping down of the main jail to offset the costs is going to be very beneficial. And we don't have to ramp that jail up all at once. We can do it because it's a new facility and we need to. But I think that is one of the big concerns from the Sheriff's Department, is once everything is ramped up, once we get everything in place, then what's it going to cost to make it sustainable? So, in the near future, I think offsetting and moving people around and personnel will take care of that. But then you've got to demolish the main jail. That's going to cost money.
Well, Supervisor, a lot of those things we're taking into consideration in the plan that the sheriff did present to us. So, it was a concept of opening up pods incrementally and that sort of thing. I do think that we, the discussions about closing the main jail, the old jail you're talking about, is part of the discussion, but it could be accelerated, and the acceleration of that could perhaps assist. Because anytime you have facilities that are open, you're going to have, you have to maintain a certain level of service and personnel where when you have them consolidated, you can hopefully, you know, cut back on some of that. So, there may be some savings there. But the sheriff did contemplate just the thing you're talking about, and still we have these big numbers that we're looking at. So, it's going to be a big, it's going to be an issue going forward, how these are going to be funded. And, you know, we're fortunate to be seeing, we're living in a point in time of expanding income to the county, which is helpful, obviously. But we also know there are times when that doesn't happen, when it can go the other direction, or it can be stagnant, not go forward, not having increased revenue. And so, we can't really count on that as being, again, the ultimate way of handling all of these things. So, again, and I think the other thing that needs to be said is that we're looking at a picture in time. Things change, you know? So, as we look at changing, we always have to be, the board will have to be alert to those changing challenges and opportunities to be able to do something. So, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Yeah. Wise man. Where to begin? Let's, so, I mean, this is pretty much just staff and the audience right now and anyone listening, but this is kind of part of the culmination, although I don't envision that this is really the end, but this is a part of what the Strategic Financing Ad Hoc Committee compiled. So, for my colleagues, Supervisors Ennis and Shuckley, and this is kind of what we've talked about in a very brief setting over the last 14 months or so, 15 months. Some of my thoughts is I would agree with Supervisor Worthley in the grants, and I'd take it a step further that as far as grants are concerned, that should just be an automatic for all departments. Whenever we can seek grants, I mean, that's an opportunity that we need to provide. Obviously, not all grants are great. There's a lot of strings attached and so, but if it makes sense, and that's something that we shouldn't necessarily, I mean, that should just be a best practice that we're looking at on an ongoing basis. I know we do that on a regular basis, so I just encourage everyone to continue to do As far as, I'll just take Zones of Benefit, because that's kind of the easiest and simplest first. I think there were several options that were taken. The action plan is very specific and has a lot of great options. I like Option Five, which isn't listed, and Option Five says utilizing Options One through Three, you know, looking for grant funds, looking for consolidation, opportunities where it makes sense, consolidating, you know, facilities that are already within the Zones of Benefit as that makes sense. And then additionally, it was in the recommendation, but it wasn't as part of the option, you know, utilizing Prop 218. And I know that was specified for specific Zones of Benefits, and that Prop 218, there's a lot of rates that are well below what they should be and that are still very affordable. And so, and then only if Prop 218 fails in those circumstances, utilize the option for where we continue to subsidize. But I guess that would be the main thing, that subsidizing out of the general fund for those is the least preferable option, you know?
It's called the status quo.
Right. Exactly. So, we don't want the status quo, and we want to continue to look forward to that. But I think that's very well-vetted, you know, and it's very specific to each of our Zones of Benefits as far as what are the options and opportunities we have. And I think there was, there was a few kind of side notes as far as operational efficiency. I don't know that any of these systems are large enough where a private entity might be interested in acquiring, but if there's options for that, I mean, even if we can't consolidate it with an existing public facility, there may be interest in private entities taking over via a public utilities process, commission process. So, if there's interest in that, I think, you know, getting it off our roles, I think, is the benefit in still being able to provide a service for them. And then just, yeah.
And just to follow up on what you were saying, I think, as you kind of pointed, I think you have to look at every separate project area and evaluate. I'm just thinking of like where we have this property that's adjacent to the city of Woodlake. They're providing the water, they're providing the sewer, or at least they're providing the water, and we're required to go through a 218 election. And so, those people are not being charged any more than, or they would not be charged any more than the citizens of Woodlake are being charged, but that they, if they, through the election process, choose not to raise their rates, which they've done the last two times, then they're getting a disadvantage. So, we need to look at a way of consolidation. If it's possible to go to the state of California to force a consolidation or whatever, but I think we need to look at every, every one of these aspects we look at separately and look at what are the options that are available to this particular sewer or water, you know, system? What are the options the county can look at achieving? But as you say, the goal would be is to get it off of, you know, the subsidization position which we've been in for a number of years and make them self-standing somewhere or another. We're doing that in Seville and Gettum. That's an opportunity. There are other opportunities, you know? What we can do, like, you know, to get maybe Woodlake to take over this property, maybe we could provide some of the funding to do underground utilities and so forth, do different things that would encourage them, make it a worthwhile thing for them to do. But we just need to look at every, I think, every situation separately and analyze it.
And I just, you know, just for the public's consumption, this is, it was in the report, but just the fact that, you know, that Terabella has, with their sewer system, has the opportunity to expand and take on new customers, including large commercial customers, that, I mean, that is, that's something that I don't think we normally think about, or the public doesn't normally think about, as a cost savings, expand to cost save. But the economy's a scale gain by that, helps out all residents in Terabella if we can do that. And so, there's, obviously, there's large upfront capital costs in order to get to that point. But I really appreciate staff looking at all options and, you know, it's not a cookie-cutter approach. It's very specific to each of the Zones of Benefit, so I appreciate that. And then I guess just from a very holistic approach, because there is rather beefy, but we're looking at detention facilities as part of this. We looked at the costs of healthcare for inmates as a large cost. We looked at fire, increased fire costs. I mean, we talked about this morning about the devastation of the car fire. 800-plus homes destroyed, lives that have been lost, a great-grandparent and two young children. And so, what is the value of our public safety in Tulare County? And I think that's something that, we've looked at it from a dollar standpoint, but most of these plans are, you know, let's have general fund dollars, and for this year, we know that that's probably going to be okay if we're already budgeting for that and helping to offset rising costs and increased budgets. But again, we've talked about, how long does that last? The economy's doing great. We saw GDP for the U.S. is 4.1%. That's positive, but how long does that last? Hopefully, it lasts longer, but that's something that we don't know about. And so, at that point in time, we know that there's going to be a slowing, if not a recession. And are we prepared for the increased costs? And so, I think in addition to this, you know, there was some reference to public financing for Fire in particular, and I believe that's in reference to certificates of participation for capital improvements. But again, I would be not so much in favor of looking at COPs in that standpoint, but what are, what are our public safety needs as a county as a whole? I know our sister agencies in our eight incorporated cities also have those, and is it time for a public safety sales tax, a county-wide public safety sales tax? I don't know that that's the answer, but I think that we need to begin exploring what is feasible long-term to provide that. We've seen a tremendous amount of success with Measure R, where that generates over $30 million a year for our local roads and regional projects. You know, I, nobody likes new taxes. Nobody likes new fees, but we have to come to a determination as far as if we want to continue this growth, then we're going to have to find some realistic new revenue that we can bank on year in and year out, or we're going to have to start really, you know, readjusting and not just saying, well, we're going to phase things in. We may just say, well, you're going to reach a plateau. So, it's not really a phase. It's, this is what we can do, and year in and year out, we'll reevaluate and see what, you know, if we're able to do more, or realistically, we're going to have to do less. And so, that's what I think this board, as well as the public, needs to think about as far as what do we want Tulare County to look at? Because, you know, what is, what's in this packet is not, the current model, we know is not sustainable. I mean, that's just the reality. We're not going to be able to sustain, even with IHSS, with jail medical, so we can, you know, we can dip into reserves only so long, but the costs continue to increase. And once the reserves are gone, they're gone. So, I don't like this approach, and I don't say this lightly, but I do think that we need to look at some other things that are a little more outside of the box that if this is what we want, if that's, if the public doesn't want that, if this board doesn't want that, then we need to start looking at, you know, what are the cuts? What is, what is the sustainable future and then, you know, putting a cap on that?
Well, thank you. You know, I just want to thank, you know, everybody who's on the ad hoc for all the review, and thank you, Kyler, for, you know, the synopsis of that. And I agree, you know, we have been big in the last few years on economic development and, you know, bringing in more revenue for that, but I think there's going to be a time where that's going to slow just because of trends. And I do like that idea of looking at maybe floating a safety tax. It's unfortunate that so many other cities and whatnot have done it, and we have the Measure R, so it's, it is difficult to sell, no pun intended, as far as a sales tax, but we do need to look at that, so.
Good pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I've got a few comments to definitely, first of all, I want to thank all the departments and thank my colleagues who participated in and the CAO's office for kind of running the ad hoc committee process, because as you can see, these are not simple topics. These are very complex. This is very forward-thinking. Not too many jurisdictions right now are talking about what is coming, what potential downturns are in the future, and what are going to drive our budgets. And it's going to be jail medical. It's going to be IHSS. It's going to be Zones of Benefit. There's a lot of the key areas that are going to drive our future and what budgets are going to look like that we're already proactively talking about and thinking about. And I think Supervisor Crocker said it very well in the one line of saying, how important is our public safety? I think that we have to, as a county, come to grips with what level of service we expect and are we comfortable with, and what level are we willing to pay for? We look at our roads and how they're improving through Measure R and the leveraging ability that that provides us, and we're seeing significant improvements in our transportation infrastructure. I do believe that general sales tax may be an option for public safety, especially when you consider that what's going to be driving our public safety cost increases are jail medical costs, our facilities costs, and you have to remember, those aren't just unincorporated county residents that are in these jails. We incarcerate city residents, and so, just like Measure R, we're all paying into a pot. We're all seeing the benefits. That's what could be attained potentially from a public safety tax as well. Going subject by subject, I do think that specifically related to the Zones of Benefit, Supervisor Worthley mentioned a little bit about this, and that is consolidations with cities where possible. There are some systems that we have that are immediately adjacent to cities that have better infrastructure systems, and I know there's a cost associated with that. We may be interested in partnering with some of our cities to help front some of that cost to get these systems into their control, and they may see a benefit from an economy of scale. So, it's a benefit to both parties. I think we have to look at all options. I think we made that comment when the ad hoc committee at least reviewed the Zones of Benefit topic. And there's also consolidation within Zones of Benefit where they are adjacent to one another. It may not be a city, but I believe it's a Rosy and East of Rosy. There's a forced consolidation that's going to be coming up there. So, there is a basis for doing that, and it's going to definitely help the county's overall finance in that area as well. I agree with the comment that grants should be relied upon, but grants should be, not not be relied upon all the time as being year-in, year-out revenue to budget upon, but they should be sought at every opportunity. I know that the Fire Department does a great job in getting new apparatuses and improved equipment by obtaining various grants. Sheriff's Department does a great job. All departments should be looking at various grant opportunities to improve their fleet or improve their capital so that we can continue to provide services from better positions. One topic was kind of glossed over in here, and that was on Page Five in dealing with the Sheriff's Department. Option Two, pursue entrepreneurial activities, specifically the property and evidence facility. That facility right there, by, you know, expanding the project a little bit and not just providing the bare minimum evidence housing facility as was initially sought or thought about, but actually becoming a certified lab is a potential revenue-generating opportunity. That is thinking outside the box. That's something that every county department should really look at and consider. What ways can you generate money within your department so that you can use that money to offset increasing costs in the future? I think we have to look at all of those opportunities and take advantage of them. And then lastly, Supervisor Worthley made a comment about using an outside auditing firm. While that may ultimately be a... While that may ultimately be a, a direction this board ends up going, I do think that we have an opportunity just internally to, to at least start the discussion, the conversation. We have an, an audit committee. We have a, a very strong ability within just to, to go out and do some basic efficiency audits. And we may find opportunities there that may help save some money. And having that roundtable type conversation, there may be opportunities in HHS where we can obtain an additional million dollars in revenue by spending a little bit of money upfront to help them leverage some internal functions. We don't necessarily know about all those opportunities, but I think we need to have that conversation now while the times are, are better so that when the next downturn comes, we actually have an increased base from which we can draw upon to provide services and, and basically stave off any cuts that could be coming. So, those are just a few thoughts that I have and wanted to cover some of the various subjects.
I had a couple of thoughts also, listening to all of you, and I appreciate your, your input. I, I was thinking, one thought that came to my mind is that I've always believed that the county is inadequately reserved. Our reserves are very, very limited, approximately twenty-five, thirty-five million dollars. And one approach is to be a little less conservative on the, on the investment income as we are currently and be a little bit more, you know, push, push the envelope a little bit. But to do that, you better have a good, good amount of reserves to, to fall back upon. And so, I think it's, because once we fix, once you have these fixed costs in place, doesn't matter what the economy's doing unless you're going to start laying people off, you've got, you're, you're, you're facing these costs. They're ongoing. And so, having a reserve is a way of assisting you getting through difficult times. I remember some years ago, I think Kern County, they figured out, we've got these reserves, let's, let's use them for, we'll figure a five-year period. And if we're out of money in five years, we're out of five years, but hopefully the economy will turn around, that kind of a thing. But that's sort of the strategy. If you don't have the reserves, you can't do that. So, I think, I think we should be building our reserves. The other thing we haven't talked about, but if we're looking at additional revenue, I, I wonder, and it seems very closely tied to this idea of public safety, especially fire, would be parcel taxes. Because you think about a parcel tax, it's related to, I'm talking about, you know, this is for the protection of my property. Why would I not be willing to pay a little additional more, a property tax, which is the one tax, by the way, in California, which is somewhat reasonable because of Prop 13, pay a little bit more of additional parcel tax in order to pay for the services to protect this property from vandalism, fire and so forth? So, just another thought of looking at. This is something I appreciate. I think it needs to be brought back to the board, probably on an annual basis, to review this sort of thing and look at what are, what are, what's this future look like? Because it's always this dynamic. It's always changing. So, Mr. CAO, does that give you some, some, some thoughts about where the board is situated currently?
It does, and the comments are very well noted and well received. It is very helpful moving ahead.
Anything from the public that wants to speak to this matter, department folks?
No departments with money ideas?
There we go.
Is he leaving the building? Is he going to come up and talk to?
Charlie has left the building.
Oh, there's one brave soul. Fire chief steps up.
Any money will be appreciated.
Well, I love you, Charlie.
And again, appointed, not elected. I looked for the sheriff and he wasn't around. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Spot and Ms. Peterson. When you appointed me to be fire chief back in January 5th of 2016, appointment, I very much appreciated. The first thing we did was look at the department and look at where we're going, what we have, what we're doing and efficiencies. One of the first things we did was look at our operation. We had a supply center that seemed to be overpaid, underutilized. We closed down the supply center. We put those programs out in the field at some Marslow responding stations. The permit center process, working with Mr. Lehman, we've helped to streamline along in that process. And we do have some hiccups every now and again, but we've helped to streamline that process. We've eliminated an office staff position and we consolidated some of those duties up front. From the tree mortality standpoint, we've done more work in the last two months than we did in the previous two years by having a local government tree mortality task force and a brush crew to get out in front of these things and have some prevention. Our technology, our Foxtrot fire app, we've been able to cut down and reduce response times. So, I think we've looked at all the efficiencies. We've had several large incidents within the last couple of years, some flooding incidents. Everything that comes down to is bricks and mortars and staffing for us. We have some apparatus and some of these apparatus from the eighties are bulletproof. They don't have the computers. But we have one apparatus in Kennedy Meadows that's a 1982. I graduated in 1982 and I'm no spring chicken.
I wasn't even alive in that.
Exactly. A couple of board members.
You should use another example.
So, so, we do have some aging infrastructure. I think we have a plan, and I know the tax dollar is very valuable, and we'll look at some entrepreneurial ways. But everything comes up, the apparatus are getting larger for all risk activities and the stations are staying the same. So, some more stations that are scheduled for remodels, those were built in the fifties. And so, we do have some aging infrastructures. I, I think we painted a pretty good picture. I want to thank Sophia and Cecilia, where's Mr. Spot's office, for helping us get to this point. So, I would answer any questions you have.
Questions, Charlie? We do have scheduled a lot of, over a period of time, a number of projects to, to deal with your stations themselves. What, what we don't really have at this point in time is a, their funding source to look at additional personnel, and that's, and that's another issue, so.
It's, and being, you know, accepting our level of risk, what we're going to take at the county, as we talked about earlier, it's, we're not proposing a three-O model or a four-O model. We're looking at a two-O model to just make sure. And we do have active recruitment to try and bring back some of the extra help. Hopefully, this fall, we'll have thirty or thirty-five additional so we can help augment some of that staffing. It's just some of the, the blue collar gap, we're not having the volunteers that we used to in the seventies, eighties, nineties.
You know, Charlie, I was just thinking about all these fires we're having across the state of California, and I look back a number of years, back in the eighties, the board supervisors at that time, in their effort to try to protect agricultural property, really promoted development in the foothills. Fortunately, a lot of that didn't happen. And as we look today at the fire problems, I'm grateful that it didn't happen. Can you imagine if we had a lot of communities built up in those foothills that were, I mean, we have some existing ones, but the plan really had been to push almost all development into the foothills, and then you've got some real fire issues. So, I'm grateful that didn't happen.
And great for a land use issue with the farm communities, but bad for urban interface issues, so.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you for your time.
Look what you started, Charlie.
That's good. Hey, we need your feedback.
There we go.
Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO, County Council, Jason Britt, HSA Agency Director. We certainly support from HSA's perspective, the, the recommendation from the CAO's office for today's discussion. I do just want to point out a couple of things, sort of to just be points of conversation as we move forward is, one is that we focused a lot at the Strategic Finance Committee around leveraging the trust funds and the sort of the savings accounts that HSA has, and we're more than happy to do that. But one of the places we didn't really talk about was sort of the enormous amount of health realignment that we're spending already that compromise, I will say, just creates some challenges with carrying out our public health mandates. And so, that's part of our discussion that I just want to point here is, we need to look at sort of both sides of the equation moving forward. There was a time where we had, the agency had a cap to its costs with the county and, again, as you pointed out earlier, things change. The other piece is also, is although I do think this has to be looked at in a year-by-year cases, particularly around the jail medical contract for South County, there are some difficulties with, with negotiating multi-year contracts for services with sort of commitments of funding. I don't know how to say it. But, so that would just makes things a little more difficult. Again, we will always be working with the CAO. We're always going to be exploring ways. One of the things, just for the full board to know, that we talked about to the Strategic Finance Committee was that based on all the available research and all the available thinking out in the whole world about jail medical and mental health costs, a lot of the costs are driven by case law in California. And the standards of healthcare, mental health care are no longer community standards, are no longer sort of benchmarks that we used years ago. And I prefer if county council would, could talk more about that. But I do know a lot of the precedents and case laws driving a lot of the standards, which then again, drive cost in these contracts for all of our facilities. So, that's going to be an ongoing sort of challenge as well as part of this conversation. And the, the only way really to manage healthcare costs in the jail is to have less population. And of course, that's driven by, you know, who commits crime, who goes to jail. So, to close today, we do, we do support this, the Strategic Finance Committee's recommendations, the CAO recommendations with just those few points to just punctuate as further points of conversation and knowing that we all are grappling with this. But together as a team, you know, we'll work, we'll come out better ahead, so.
IHSS is a huge issue because it's, it's the unknown. If everybody who is, has the ability to, to receive that benefit, walked in tomorrow and asked for it, not the money in the, in the county to handle something like that. So, there's a, things, as you say, we have to really be very careful in our, our assessments, our, you know, we don't know really what the future holds in some of these areas. It could be a lot different than what it is right now. The one thing to keep in mind always is that we're not an island. So, the, the issue of IHSS is not just a county of Tulare problem. It's a much bigger problem than any other counties. And that in itself is a good thing because it will lend itself to some sort of resolution, but we just have to continue to be mindful of that.
One thing, Mr. Chair, based on what Mr. Britt said, and I'm going to hold you to it, if we can get jail medical costs to go down by having less population, we should be well on our way because there's not going to be a crime left in the state of California if they keep redefining what's a crime, right?
It's an interesting observation. Okay, anything else?
Well, somewhat on that point, but I think it's, we need to keep that in consideration. I, I didn't bring it up earlier to be a little more brief, but, you know, there is a shift as far as, you know, who we are incarcerating and that.
Especially pre-trial.
Right. And so, that needs to be, you know, that, that needs to be part of this discussion as we're figuring out what are the potential costs for these new jails? You know, are they even going to be fully utilized? And if not, then what is, you know, some of the efficiencies that we were planning on may not be there. So, on the negative side, on, on the positive side, we may not have as much of the costs. But, but does that, but does that mean that there's actually a shift? There may not, there may be less costs for the Sheriff's Department, but is there more cost for probation if that's the case? So, you know, those are just factors that I think we need to, you know, it's, it's still unclear as far as the direction. And I think, you know, we, we're not going to have a good idea as far as a lot of things until we know what the new governor wants to do, especially with IHSS. What, what that happens come early next year, we'll hopefully have a better idea.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else? All right. So, this is not an action item. Do you have heard corrections?
Received the report.
Okay, so I need a motion to receive. Motion by Amy, Supervisor Shuckley, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Supervisor Innis.
Be unanimous.
It is now unanimous. This decision does not count. All right, that completes our, our open session. We have eyes for closed session, council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, items A, B, and E are off calendar. Items C and D and on the addendum, item F will be heard in closed session, but I do not expect any announcements out.
Well, one last thing. Council advised me this morning that escrow closed and the money was transferred to Tulare County for the sale of the old courthouse, the annexed and downtown by Sayas of yesterday.
It'll close tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I'm sorry.
And one last, last thing. One last, last thing, it is our Chief of Staff's birthday, so I just want to say happy birthday for the event.
Thank you.
I thought it was yesterday.
It was.
I know, but still, it's worth celebrating. When you turn thirty, it only happens once.